It's 6:30, so I'd like to call this meeting to order with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call to order. Tayshaun Singh, Chivlingham.
Present.
Casey Barney.
Here.
Carol Lamos.
Here.
Fran Newton. Here. Okay, first we have to approve the minutes of 10:12. Any comments or corrections?
Ten two.
I'm sorry, ten two. Yes, I have one on the second page, line six. It's not a big deal, but DOT should be all caps.
Yeah, there's another one. I have one there too, line seven.
Okay.
T.A. Smith will consolidate the board rating scores.
Ah, okay, thank you.
Results to BOS.
Mm-hmm.
At line 10, it's email the board of selectmen.
Okay.
Because right there, it looks like I didn't rank them.
Yeah.
The board did.
Yeah.
So you want to say T.A. Smith will consolidate the top three. How do you want that to work?
Consolidate the board of selectmen rating scores.
Yeah. He didn't rank them, we all did. And he just consolidated them.
And line 10 was arrange the interviews?
Arrange the interviews and email the board.
Okay.
Not me.
So T.A. Smith will consolidate the board of selectmen. And then what was yours, Carol?
Oh, it wasn't mine, but it was line 10. It says, "T.A. Smith will arrange," it's supposed to say, "the interviews and email the board."
Anything else?
Yeah, on page three, line 30.
Yep.
The chairman of the unit acknowledged that it should be, the board of selectmen is committed to working with the electric commission to resolve this issue.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So switch them.
Yep.
Switch them.
That's good, thank you.
And then back up on line 22, electric commissioner Jamie Leifert. Instead of...
Yeah, of the electric department.
He's an electric commissioner, not of the department.
Yeah. In that case, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of October 2nd as amended.
No move.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Comments? Corrections? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of October 11th as written.
No move.
Second?
No.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I don't see any public comments. Any public comments? Okay, moving on. Consent agenda for the week of October 9th. The general fund manifest is $89,189 and the payroll manifest $12,388. So we pass those along for signature. Department heads, is Ann coming to...
No, but she wrote the memo.
She wrote the memo, okay.
Yeah.
So Ann Barney wrote a memo about background checks. I will read that for the public. Background, to ensure that the children are safe, I must make sure that everyone that either works with our volunteers to be with the children has the proper background check. I know that in SAU 48, we will take a background check done by any of the towns in the district to try to save money. I talked to Charlie and the attorney to see if there's anything we can set up, have the work done for our town. After going back and forth with the attorney, there's an attached form that will allow us to do this. The background checks are very expensive. They're $47 each and in my department, if my department must pay for every volunteer, I'll be over budget very quickly. So she would like to make a motion or recommend that we make a motion to allow the form that has been okayed by the attorney to be used to obtain background checks from people who have had them done in the past 12 months. Fiscal impact would save the Parks and Rec Department $47 per person if they already have a background check done.
Mm-hmm.
So, and this is the form. It's a very simple form.
Pretty straightforward, yeah.
Yep, so are there any comments?
I have some questions.
Yes.
So is the background check done once initially at the time of employment or is it done periodically?
It's done once. It's done once.
Okay.
I know when I volunteered for the school ski program, I had to have one done.
Yep, working with kids.
Yep, working with kids.
And how many employees does she have? Like, what is the...
It varies according to the season. She has more in the summer. I don't know what the exact total is.
I don't either, but this is basically for someone that works at another town, gives us the authority that we document the fact that we're going to ask for a neighbor in town's background check.
Right, if they've already had one done, there's no reason to do it again.
That one's just done maybe a month or two ago.
And the background check consults, I mean, consists of having your fingerprints taken, looking at your license driver and driving record and...
It's from the state.
You know, it's from the state. So it's fairly simple, but it is $47.
Now, I know we have a few that both work concurrently at the school and for Parks and Rec. Could we save that $47 if the school has already done it?
That's the whole idea. There's no reason to have it done twice, but I think this specifically addresses those from a different town that might work here. And their background checks should suffice as well. Because there's really no reason, it's never done twice, yes.
So how has she been doing it up to this point? Has she been doing it...
She's been paying for them.
Paying for all of them, okay. And was this proposed change reflected in her budget? Because she mentioned, you know, potentially saving the money. I imagine there, if she's been paying for it up to this point, she would have that in her current budget as proposed.
Well, I'm sure her budget reflects background checks. Yeah, I'm sure it does.
Right, but my point is if she's asking us to save money, then that savings would hopefully be reflected in the budget.
Hopefully.
The only case where I would see that that wouldn't come to light would be if she had someone let go. If you have the position, if there had someone been there for three or four years recently, they lost two people that had been there two or three years, subsequently they had to have new hires, so that would have been $94 she wouldn't have anticipated.
Yeah, exactly.
If somebody said, "I quit."
Yeah.
So we have to kind of, there's got to be some wiggle room there.
Right, yeah, exactly. Harold, you can't predict down to the penny who's going to stay and who's going to come that's new, so... But in any case, that's a side question. It's irrelevant to the policy.
Well, I mean, since she's asking for the approval, I feel that, you know, especially since she's basically mentioned savings, I think that does have bearing.
Well, it may have bearing on her budget, but it doesn't have bearing on the policy is what I'm saying. Are we going to allow the use of background checks from another town? It has really nothing to do with budget. It has more to do with ultimately saving us money in the long run. So if you have questions about her budget, I think that's a side issue that you can take up with her, but I don't think it, in any way alleviates the necessity for having this policy implemented.
Yeah, and you don't know how many volunteers she's going to get
No, you don't.
Over the course of the year.
Right. So is there anyone who'd like to make a motion to approve this form?
I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor of allowing her to use this form going forward, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Town administrator. Tax rate.
Yeah, all right, so... It is tax rate set in time for the town. We are all set to go with DRA. The last thing that we need is an amount from the board of selectmen to determine how much of our unassigned fund balance we want to use to lower or at least stabilize the tax rate. Once I get an amount from the board of selectmen, we'll tell that to DRA. DRA will review it all, send the tax collector the final tax rate, who will submit out our tax bills. The tax collector told me she was hoping to get an answer tonight, so then we can distribute bills as of November 1st with collections to begin in December. Currently, our unassigned fund balance is at 1.1 million. I earlier recommended to the board, if we use 200,000 of our unassigned fund balance, that will keep our tax rate stable. Town tax rate, for clarifications, at 8.57. This would be a continued, just about a two-cent reduction every year since 2015 and also leave us in a pretty stabilized position with a balance after of 910,000.
Charlie, would you please give us an overview of what an unassigned fund balance is and is not, because no matter how many times we've explained it, there's still a lot of confusion out there.
So the unassigned fund balance is basically everything that's sort of left over at the end of the day. When we, the town will produce our budget and then we have our expenditures during the year, whatever's left over or not encumbered, that rolls into the unassigned fund balance. Any surplus that we have that are over the estimated revenues that we have, that rules over into the unassigned fund balance. It's an amount that accumulates over time. I talked to DRA today and they confirmed, there's three primarily uses for the unassigned fund balance. One is there's, if there's like an emergency request, roof collapse, you know, anything that might happen, voting at town meeting. So what that means is if we have a warrant article for a certain project, instead of having the appropriation be from taxes, we can say, "We want to pay for it to build a building."
Yeah.
And the other one, the third, is to reduce the tax rate.
Right. But what it is not, which is more important, is not a pile of cash that we're sitting on. I've had, I've heard that rumor multiple times over the last years. We're not sitting on a bank account in the amount of 1. something million dollars. It also includes property taxes that are due. It includes accounts payable, if you will. It is not just cash. It is not just what's left over at the end of the year. So people who think that we can cut the budget and then we're collecting all this money and just saving cash
Right.
Are completely mistaken.
Yeah.
In terms of history, about five years ago, we had an unassigned fund balance of about $10,000. The DRA recommends anywhere from 7% to 15%.
Five to 17.
Five to 17%. And the reason for having an unassigned fund balance, as Charlie said, are those three things. But in addition, it also describes your town's financial picture. So if you were to go and get a loan, for example, you have a much better credit rating if you have an unassigned fund balance. I know there are towns that fund their capital needs with the unassigned fund balance. We have never had the luxury. And if you recall from the past, some of you have been here long enough, in the space of two years, we had two major emergencies for which we had no cash. One was that the fire department roof was due to cave in and was critical. And the other one was the Collins Street Bridge. And we ended up striking up a deal with Water and Sewer and they ended up paying for half of it. It was an emergency. The DOT shut the bridge down. These things happen. They don't happen every year and hopefully they'll never happen again. But you have to have fiscal responsibility and planning ahead and saving for the future. And again, using that money to stabilize the tax rate, you cannot think about taking all of that money and eliminating the tax rate because that would be a one-shot deal. We'd be back with no money and we'd have a low tax rate for one year and then it would go right back up again. The other thing is, is that our tax rate, the tax rate that you pay, which is high, is not just the town. As Charlie mentioned, we have managed to stabilize it and reduce it by a few cents every year in the past five years. We cannot control what the county does and we cannot control what the state does. So education, I'm sorry. So taxes tend to go up. They're the things beyond our control. I think that we have done a remarkable job in the last five years of not only keeping our tax rates as stable as we can, but in building our capital reserves. Again, five years ago, we had next to nothing in capital reserves. Now we have a road capital reserve, we have police vehicle capital reserve, we have a fire department capital reserve, we have a DPW capital reserve that's allowing us hopefully in the future to fund those capital needs without going to the taxpayers every voting, every year when we vote and another warrant article. I mean, ultimately, the only way to reduce taxes is not by cutting the budget. You can cut the budget $50 here, $100 there, it's going to make zero difference in your tax rate. Ultimately, the only way you reduce your tax rate is increasing your revenues, increasing your valuation, economic development, and reducing debt. So it makes far more sense to use that capital reserve to reduce debt. I mean, the town has a very healthy, long-term debt obligation now from way in the past. And then we have debts that we accumulate because we haven't planned ahead for many, many years. You know, now we're able to fund police vehicles without having to go to the town and saying, "Can we have another $40,000 for a police vehicle?" Because we built that capital reserve. So I just want to say, it's not a simple matter of, you know, giving people back the money that we've been collecting and it's in our pocket. It's not there. So that's my spiel. So I just think people need to understand what that balance is.
Yeah, you have to be cautious about how much that you use because, for example, right now, the tax effort that we have is 2.2 million, right?
Yep.
That's safe to assume it's going to be 2.2 million next year.
Right.
Unless you have a significant reduction in services.
Right.
You know, so whatever you use this amount, if you don't have that increase in valuation or revenue
Right.
In order to keep it stabilized, like right now, the rate stands at 9.41, right? Last year was 8.59 because we used unassigned fund balance to bring it down to 8.59.
Right, and now it's back up again.
Now that 80,000 that we used last year is gone
Right.
That you have to make up for this year to maintain that stabilization.
Right, and that's what we've done. But as you can see, it's still going up. Now, our budget has gone up and it's gone up mostly because of things, again, over which we have no control. The vast majority of our budget is salaries. And if you can name me one department where we can cut personnel, I'd be interested to hear it because I don't see it myself.
I'm sure.
Excuse me, I'm still talking. Thank you. We cannot reduce, we can't really reduce personnel and so the union contract has also impacted our salaries and we have to stick with that. Retirement has gone up. Health insurance has gone up. All those things are beyond our control. So as soon as you start cutting services, then you impact the functioning of the town. I think that this board has done a very good job over the last several years at keeping our services adequate, not flush, not overkill, while maintaining as much as we can a stable tax rate. So I just, you know, want to say we shouldn't be going crazy and thinking about using hundreds of thousands of dollars to cut the tax rate for one year because we'll only have to make it up next year. Yes, Tayshaun Singh?
Yeah, well, first I want to say that I didn't really appreciate how you kind of indicated to me as if I was interrupting you. You took a lot of time, a lot of airspace, but thank you for allowing me to speak. I want to read from the Basic Law Budgeting from NHMA and it's on page 44, under lapses to fund balance, not surplus. And then under item one, fund balance retain or reduce the tax rate. It says, "General government finance guidelines recommend that municipalities retain 5% to 15% of regular general fund operating revenues or 8% to 17% of regular general fund operating expenditures." So when I, oh, and there's one more item I want to read here too, before I get into explaining what I propose. This is from the fund balance retention sheet that Mr. Smith gave us on page four. It says, "Please note that current best practices published by GFPA recommends at a minimum that general purpose governments, regardless of size, maintain unrestricted fund balance in their general fund of no less than two months of regular general fund operating revenues or regular general fund operating expenditures." So what I've done is taken two months, I spoke with Mr. Smith, so we, after speaking with him, he gave me some information. So from taking January to September, basically came up with a monthly operating expenditure of 205,000 a month. So multiply that by two months, 410,000. And then if we take 10% of the actual budget that we are currently working on, which is $260,028, and we add them together, we get $670,028. So if we take that, the 670,000 and subtract it from the 1.1 million approximately, it's actually, the exact number is 1.110,093. So the remainder is 440,065. I believe that, and I believe that that is a respectable and prudent amount, given what I've just read to you, that we can use to offset taxes. The, and if you add, if you take that number, 670,028, that is 16.9% of the general funds operating, or the budget. So I think that it fits within that parameter. Thank you.
I'm sorry, what number did you say to use?
I'm afraid you've lost me.
So 440,000, in summary, what I would propose that we use is 440,065 to offset taxes.
44465?
Right.
And you do understand that if we use that, we could not match that again next year? With the taxes would likely go up again? So this is a one-shot deal?
Yeah, I think that it would, it's actually helpful because then people will start to see what the actual tax rate is and then they can, you know, evaluate if what they're getting in services matches what they feel like they want to part with in, you know, cash and taxes, so.
Are you making a motion?
I'd like to hear further discussion, only you might have spoken on the...
All right.
I think it's fair to give the other two members.
I have also researched that. My concern with it, I agree on paying down the taxes. I went and I looked at the tax breakdown for this year and of the proposed $1.58 increase from last year, 75 cents of that would have been the town, which the $200,000 covers, but 83 cents of that is the school. And you're talking about a school that costs $716,238 more to run than our town of 2,075. This school has 163 kids. It shouldn't cost 3/4 of a million dollars more than it costs to run a town. I think my fear is if we pay their debt this year, they're going to be out there every year going like this. That's my only fear.
Well, thank you, Harold, because that just indicates that this large number would propose making up the shortfall that we're hit with because of the school, over which we have no control. Again, my feeling is very strong that we can only control our budget and we can only control that portion of the tax rate that is ours, not the schools, not the counties. And it would be foolhardy for us to try to make up the shortfall of the other two areas. As nice as that sounds for a one-shot deal, I'd love to see my tax bill cut that much. But I'll know that the next year it'll go up because we cannot sustain it. And we then put the town back in a struggling financial position because you're going to have to work real hard to do that again the next time and the next time, which is why five years ago, we had a $10,000, $10,000 unassigned fund balance. I don't want to go back in that direction.
You'd be depleted in two years.
It would be depleted in two years. You're absolutely right, so.
My fear is that the students in here are a minischool number compared to the SAU student count. And then if there's 3/4 of a million dollars more to operate this school than our town, then why would our taxpayers, they already pay a good tax rate to support the school?
Absolutely.
So it would be like, honestly, it would be like paying on both ends.
Absolutely, Harold.
You'd be paying upfront with the tax levy.
Right.
But then you'd be paying in the end, right now, out of funds. I agree that it would be nice to pay down the taxes. I also agree that, I mean, I also believe that the 200,000 is a little shy. I personally would like to see $250,000 expended. And the reason for that math is that last year, the school came to us and complained that we didn't pay it down enough.
Yeah, I know.
And they said that they would be paying it down this year.
Yeah.
So if we pay $250,000, I figured that that is 25% of their balance. And we use 25% of that fund balance if we pay $250,000. So I think that's a fair number because we are assuming 25% of their debt per se.
And that's a reasonable argument. I would just contend that I would rather see that extra 50,000 of unassigned go towards somehow reducing our debt because that's the only way you permanently affect a tax rate, is reducing our debt. And if we put forward a warrant article and propose that we use 50,000 of our unassigned fund balance, we have reduced the debt that the people have to pay and that's sustained year after year. And, I mean, we could make a payment toward the fire truck, for example. It's a long-term effect as opposed to a short-term burst. So while I do appreciate your argument, Harold, and it's certainly well-taken, I'd rather see that 50 applied toward our debt in the warrant coming up to make it more permanent. You know, I think, I'm very passionate about wanting to keep our tax rate stable or nudge it down as we've done. I mean, we've inched it down. Again, we have no control over the education or the county and, you know, I'm sorry that they're high. I love our school. I'm not trying to say anything negative about our school, but we only have control of our budget and our finances and our long-term projections. And I would rather see that extra 50 go to reducing the debt, which would have the same effect ultimately, Harold, but it would be more sustainable.
The difference of between the 200 and the 250, I figured out the 200,000 would give you a two-cent reduction. $250,000 would give you a 36-cent reduction on the town portion from last year. So you'd be saving a third of a dollar from last year, which would offset 25% of the school's increase.
Casey, do you have any thoughts?
I kind of, I'm more along the lines of you should save up money and then pay off debt. Because that's, like you said, it's the longest, or the easiest way to reduce things as you're going forward. The more you can save and the more you can pay off what you already owe.
Exactly.
You're in a better position.
And you reduce interest as well. I mean, you know, sometimes I'll make an extra mortgage payment if I can because ultimately that reduces my interest. And that's, you know, a long-term saving, not a short-term fix. So...
One thing I would like to add in the math that I figured, if we did pay the $250,000, we would be contributing out of pocket $1,000 less than last year. It would be $79,000 above and beyond this year to date's unallocated fund balance. So we have a total of $176,000 to date and when, if you added the one, if you added 79,000, which is 1,000 less than last year, you come up with the 250. So we would not be paying any more out of pocket than we did last year. You'd actually be $1,000 less.
Charlie, what are your thoughts in terms of looking at the big picture?
Yeah, that's, he's right on that, you know. It's about 80,000. He gave me 80,000 last year. I think anywhere between 2 and 250 would be good. The 440, that's really high. That's really high for one year.
Yeah.
250 is 22.52%. That's what we have.
Yeah. So for interest, I did talk to DRA about the school. School can only keep 2.5% of their net assessment each year. It's a new law that just went through.
Okay.
They didn't tell me quite what year, but they didn't keep anything last year. This year, they only kept 30,000. If they don't use it in one year, it goes back into the general fund. Essentially, it was created as a sort of like an emergency fund for them if anything were to happen.
Yeah.
Because they weren't, schools didn't have one before.
Anybody care to make a motion at this point?
I'll make a motion and spend $250,000 out of the unallocated fund balance to pay towards the 2017 tax relief.
Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, for the discussion.
I just, I would be good with 200 or 250.
Okay.
So...
My thought process on it was that it would be nice, you know, the two cents, yes, it's a reduction, but I find it ironic that the same people that would laugh at us reducing it two cents would increase it 83. Pay on one side, save on the other. That's why I thought the 250 would be making a statement that we are trying to pay down our portion of the tax rate for our citizens.
And that's very true, Harold. We are trying to put down our portion. Again, it's about sustainability. And that's why the 400-something thousand, you can't maintain. So, you know, even 50, as again, you know, my preference would be to take that 50 and use it to reduce our debt, which actually ends up saving us more money. We're still going to keep our tax rate just a couple of cents below what it was, it's the right direction, but we're working real hard at putting that extra unassigned fund balance that you could do as a one-shot deal into reducing long-term debt, and I think ultimately that means more savings.
I, I was originally on, on board with the thought of the two hundred. I buy a lot of land in the area, and I use a, a map that's generated by the Hampshire Department of Revenue, which shows all the towns and your tax rate in certain colors, green, yellow, and red. Green, and I'm just, I, I've seen Ashland and Red for a long time.
Oh, it has been.
We can throw all the money we want at economic development, but if our, if our tax rate still shows up there, if someone's looking to relocate a business, relocate a family, I, I worry about that. And that's why I wanted to put the extra fifty thousand on it. Because I don't wanna see us cash poor because of a tax rate for the school continually rising. I, we need to show that we're making an effort.
You're, you're absolutely right, Harold, but economic development, don't dismiss out of hand. I mean, for example, what we're doing down at the mill with the face-
I love what you're doing down there.
Okay, that is, if, if we can bring that in, if we can get that mill to a point where we can either sell it and, or, and bring in businesses, that is gonna have a huge impact on this town's tax rate, a long-term impact on our town's tax rate. We also need to ensure that we keep this a vital community, so that people will come in. One of the biggest factors in getting people to come to your town is that you have something to offer them. Yes, the tax is a, is an off-putting thing, but if you have a vibrant community, a good school, and don't, don't underestimate how important a good school is, and growing thriving businesses, that tax rate will come down. It, it's, it just will blossom ultimately. And we're working as hard as we can to affect that, to make it a long-term, permanent effect, not just a, again, I mean, I'd probably be very popular if I just said, yeah, let's just reduce the taxes by four mills this year. What a good idea. Uh, you know, I know that I, it's, it's just not worth it to me, so. I, you know, we're, we're fighting over pennies at this point, but.
Dimes, actually.
Huh, dimes? All right, dimes, so.
Thirty-four cents.
Yeah, it's like twenty-one cents and thirteen cents.
All right.
The dime on the tax rate.
Tasha Sinner, do you wanna offer any other comments on the proposal that's on the table?
No, I have nothing further to say.
Okay. I guess it's time for a vote. All those in favor of approving, using two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of our sent, unassigned tax rate to reduce our taxes, please say aye.
Aye.
Reluctantly, aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. It was a good discussion, and, and I thank you for that.
Yeah, you should be fine. I mean, maybe, maybe you'll make it up and increase revenue this year.
And I'm gonna still keep fighting to improve our valuation and our, our revenues, which is really good.
Well, next year is the revow.
Next year is revow. Exactly. So here's hoping we can increase our valuation.
All right.
All right.
So I talked to the town treasurer about our account payables, and we thought about going to a two-week cycle, hoping to give the board a little bit of a reprieve, so to speak, so you didn't have to come in every single week. You're more than still welcome to come in to review.
Yep.
This is something the treasurer's been thinking about for a while, and thought we could cash flow things better, pair up, save a little bit on constantly cutting checks. We would bring them in every two weeks here, so you can sign here, or again, you can come in early and sit at the, the selectmen's desk and review and sign there.
Right.
But internally, it's something that we thought about changing, you know.
Right.
It's for you guys, too.
Yeah, I, um, my concern isn't for us. Yeah, it's, you know, we have to think about doing it every week, but that's, that's the minor reason for doing it. I think more importantly, is if it saves personnel and cut, check-cutting time and makes the process smoother, that's the main reason for doing it.
Yep. Personnel, we'd still have to do payroll every week, per the union agreement, but we're required to pay that by federal law anyways.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. We need a motion?
Are you all comfortable with it?
I'm comfortable with it.
Harold?
I'm comfortable with it.
I'm, I'm not comfortable with it, I prefer a motion.
All right, somebody like to make a motion that we go to a two-week accounts payable cycle?
I would make the motion to move to a two-week payment cycle for signing, for signatures. I would also ask that it would be concurrent with the weeks of our selected meetings. I know that we have three months in the year, we have five weeks, but for the most part, it'd be nice if it was just next day or the day after.
Absolutely. Second?
I'll second.
Further discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I think having it spaced out, having it every week actually allows for the potential of more meticulous review of the manifest. Also, I'd remind the board that we only need a quorum of signatures on there, so while it might be, you know, challenging to get five people, if we look at it as, we only need three people, I think it's doable.
Well, again, that was a minor consideration for me. I have no issue going in every week to sign it. For me, the, the bigger issue was making the process more streamlined and more efficient for the, for the office, so.
Yep.
I think it also allows for greater oversight. I mean, you know, if there's selectmen going in there on a weekly basis, as opposed to a, you know, a once every two weeks, I think it allows more oversight, I think it allows for more interaction, potential interaction between community members and selectmen, employees and selectmen. I think there are other, you know, benefits to kind of having a sense of putting a face to the, to the government and, you know, giving it a feel of accessibility, so.
Well, again, as Charlie said, you're free to go in every week, every day, if that matters, and I probably will go in every week, and maybe two or three times a week. That's not gonna change for me. And, and you're right, we only need three signatures, but again, I'm just more concerned about operations in the town hall, so. Any other comments? All right, all those in favor of approving the two-week cycle? Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Project list?
Well, I had a couple of things that came to my desk, that wanted to bring to the board's attention.
Right, right, right.
Just sort of FYIs. Actually, this first one will need a vote. We had a resident that was interested in being a Scrivener trustee today. The clerk said this was appointed back in the spring.
Okay.
Apparently, the paperwork got, she forgot to send us the paperwork. I don't know, but Alfred Salvoni was appointed and would like to be a Scrivener trustee.
Yeah.
I have the paperwork for the board to sign.
Yeah, I remember making that call.
If Patsy misplaced it, or I don't know what happened.
All right, then we should re-sign it.
She sent you an email.
Yeah, we should re-sign it.
Yep. If we could have the motion to, just for the record, make sure we have the motion to accept his appointment.
Motion to accept Al Salvoni for Scrivener trustee?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Okay.
This past week, we had a zoning board of adjustment meeting that all of the zoning board members, they didn't have a quorum at all for the application. I've talked to the zoning board chair about this, who's asked me to read this memo. Okay, Ashland Board of Selectmen, on October twelfth, twenty-seventeen, the zoning board could not field a quorum to have a scheduled hearing. There were only two members present. The applicants were displeased and rescheduled, the meeting was at the town's expense. For the last several years, the ZBA has been without full membership. As chair of the board, I have asked the board of selectmen to fulfill their obligation and appoint a full-time member in two to three alternates. The board of selectmen has failed to appoint anyone to the board. I once again ask the board of selectmen to fill the vacant positions on the zoning board to ensure that the ZBA can fulfill its functions. Sincerely, Oris Eli Badger.
Yeah, it, it has been a problem, I can certainly attest to that, you know, and we sit back and we keep saying, please, step up, step up, and nobody steps up. But the ZBA is an extremely important body in this town. And, you know, here we are, trying to create economic development, and we're turning away people from a, a meeting they thought they had already scheduled. And I don't know how we go out and beat the bushes and find somebody. I'd certainly like suggestions, but we're gonna have to really convince somebody to join. We can't just sit back and wait for somebody to step up to the plate, because this, this is really bad business for us. We have a, you know, alternates that are needed on the planning board as well. And I, I would look for suggestions of people, anyone you know who might be interested in, in making this commitment. It's, they don't need all that often, but it's an extremely important board, so.
Yeah, they protect the health and the general welfare of the public.
Absolutely, absolutely. I know we've all been frustrated with things we've seen done in the town that, you know, didn't get the right permits or whatever, but if we don't have a strong ZBA, then we have no reason to complain.
And it's important that we have this filled, because on applications such as this, you need, the applicant wouldn't pass with, it needs three votes to pass. So even though we had, we're short one, this applicant took the risk that they need all three of those people to vote aye. Or it's, yeah, it fails.
Yeah, we have four members, but.
It's not, it's not majority when it comes to that.
No, it's not, I don't know. So I would ask if you know of anybody, to please let me know, so we can make some calls.
My concern is that we have an empty board member, or two or three members on this board, that for any economic development, if there's any businesses that would like to come to town, if there's anybody who would like to relocate a business, this is stacking the cards against them.
Absolutely, absolutely. It, you know, we're trying to improve the reputation of the town, and how can we say we're a business-friendly town, when we can't even put together a ZBA to your case, so. I would ask each of the board members, I'd ask the public, this is a plea. And I'll be happy to strong-arm some people as soon as I identify them, but we really need this board filled. So Eli, I'm sorry that that had to happen at the ZBA, it's, I'm sure it was very frustrating for you, you wasted your time, and more frustrating for the applicant.
The applicant's time.
Yes, it is, the applicant's time, absolutely. There's just no excuse for that. And, and we as a board are obligated to find some way to fill that void immediately.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to hear the board's thoughts on, what if, I think that the zoning board could be potentially an elected position if the people voted that at a town meeting. Does the board think that having it as an elected position might garner more interest? People might, I understand, I can hear the, you know, the ready retort that we still don't have people to fill the, you know, positions that are elected, for example, on the Budget Committee. However, I think that it, it would give more kind of face time to the position, you know, it would be on the ballot, people would know that it exists. Maybe some people don't even, you know, realize that it exists at this point, but if it were an elected position, it might, you know, get more, might get more interest.
I mean, given that we had two positions on the select board last time, and only one name, given that we have several vacancies on the Budget Committee, you know, I, I don't share your optimism that this is gonna change anything, but Eli, I, you've been on the ZBA for quite some time, I'd certainly like your thoughts. Sorry to put you on the spot, but you've been a member for a very long time.
There are towns that have elected boards. Several of the towns are having problems to be filling them through election. Volunteerism, whether elected or appointed, is, is decreasing. People have less and less time to spend outside of their homes. And I understand that. If I weren't seventy, with, with no children, I probably would want to be home at night. Even though the ZBA doesn't generally take up a whole lot of time, it does require, one, to read the rules, to be, to be able to process that, and it means that the person that comes on the board may be unpopular. Because if you decide in favor of one over another, you've upset somebody. We've had cases in the last few years where it has been very emo- they become emotional. Some of the reasoning has not been logical, it's been all emotional. I can understand why someone would have, have some trepidation wanting to volunteer. I mean, you people volunteer, and you not, and you're not sure that the person coming up to you is going to be a friend or foe with what you're trying to do on the board. It's the nature of volunteerism in this time. We need a full board. You have a planning board, if you have the planning board, you need a zoning board. It, as I say, it's difficult to get people to come out, and I'm right, I'm starting to ramble.
No, it's okay. I, I share your frustration, Eli.
I have been, I will say that I have been attacked because I have been on so many boards, and my response has always been, I have time to volunteer. It's time to get some new blood.
Yay, amen.
I mean, it's nice to see Mr. Barney up there, Mr. Lemos, Mr. Shiva Legum, they're all younger than I am, and it's nice to see that they've taken in the interest in helping the town out. I'd like to see that carried on to the planning board and the zoning board. And no, we're not as popular as the Fourth of July Committee. But that's a happy board. It's explosive at times. But we need volunteers in the less popular boards also. Thank you for your time.
And that's one of them, you know, because it's judi- it's a judicial body. They make decisions that are hard and fast, and, and we've seen a lot of unhappiness over decisions, so.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
You know, the last thing I wanna say about turning it over to, or possibly putting up a warrant article to ask if the people wanna have it as an elected position, is that we still, I, I believe it would be us or the zoning board, the current members, someone would have the right to appoint in the case that the vacancies remained after the election. So it would essentially give us two opportunities to potentially fill the board. One, as an election, and, you know, maybe we'd get a different group of people in there that are interested in running, and then second, if they're not filled by an election, we could still have this discussion about appointing. But I think to just leave it as, you know, appointing is kind of like pigeonholing ourselves, is limiting our options, whereas, you know, we could open it up.
And, and there's nothing wrong with putting it forward as a warrant article. I would suggest the best way to find out how people are interested is make it a petition warrant article, and see if you, how easy it is to get twenty-five signatures, and, and go from there. But it doesn't solve the problem today, you know? Maybe it'll solve the problem in the future, but today, we still have a problem with not having a complete ZBA. So again, make it a petition article, see how much kind of, how much interest you get. Maybe that's a good way to find new volunteers. I'm all in favor of that, so.
I think it would be a good litmus test.
Yeah, it would be.
It would be a way to see how the town is interested in interacting. Also, you, you never know, there's been people, I served on the Conservation Commission, and with that being an appointed commission, I mean, there's some of the smartest people I know who've served on there, or who do serve on there, and you ask them, you know, why did they ask, you know, earlier? It's the fear of rejection. If you're an appointed person, there's the fear of rejection, you know? If you say, hey, I wanna be on that, people, no. But if you put your name forth to be elected, that's a different story. So I think that as petitioning one article, that that would be a good litmus test.
Fear of rejection? I don't think we've ever turned down anybody.
No, but there is.
Bring them on. I suppose, I, I suppose, but try it. But in any case, we, we're still left with today's problem, and that is, I, I'm gonna ask each of you to go home and think of a name or two, and I'll be happy to make phone calls, and I will also think of a name or two. And if you know of anyone, Eli, let me know, and I will try to twist some arms, but we'll, we'll work on it.
I have a rather limited number of people that I know.
Yeah, and, and it, I wanna-
And I know where they are.
I know, and we're all doing stuff, I know, I know.
Madam Chair, Chief Randall has to handle it.
Yes, Tony.
I'll just weigh in on some of the zoning stuff, cause it's a little bit in my realm.
Indeed, it is.
The only problem with the electing part of it is that people run against each other, and they think they're gonna win, and then they end and they think they're going to win and then they end up losing. To me, that's like the biggest rejection because now you've got a real litmus test on how people feel about you as a person.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, let's face it, I got in where I got because it was a popularity contest. Okay? That's what I'm saying about.
No, you're right, absolutely right, Tony.
I think the smartest thing for the town to do is get the word out there, send it out and maybe the electric department would be more than gracious to send a notice in the.
In the bills.
In the bills.
And Water and Sewer could do the same thing, absolutely.
I think what it needs to have and it needs to be more publicized, like these meetings recorded in the paper.
Yep.
Maybe you take on an ad in the paper that says, we're looking for volunteers.
That's, that's a good idea.
I mean, that just might be some of the stuff that you do. Elected position, I don't think the elected thing's going to do as much as you're hoping it will do.
No, I don't think so. People, you know.
I guess there's no harm in trying.
There is no harm in trying, absolutely.
And, but I just don't think it's, it's going to, you're going to fill the petition, it's going to be like people are going to say, yeah, let's put it in front of the voters. Because I think most people, when they do that type of a warrant article, petition warrant article, people are all about signing it to get it in front of the people, to have the people actually vote on it.
Yeah.
And that's the only reason some people sign these petitions. I know, I've, I've signed a few petitions, I'm not necessarily for what they want, but it's about getting it in front of the people for the people to decide.
Yeah.
So whether it really is going to work if you do an elected position or not. So now people are going to run, they're going to spend money having up business cards and trying to promote themselves. They're going to spend money to get onto this board, which is a volunteer.
Right.
Non-paying job.
Right.
And as Eli pointed out, can be very contentious at times.
Absolutely.
Unwarrantly contentious and they, people get mad at the people on these boards.
Yeah.
So no good deed really goes unpunished.
Well, I know when I decided to run for the Select Board, I had one of the trustees say to me, you just need to know that on day one, you'll have at least half the town that won't like you. So if that's going to be a concern to you, don't do it. And it's true. Anyway, yes, Eli, would you hand up?
I want to bring it back to this. The process of the election is a two-year process. You vote first the first year.
Yep.
The second year, it goes on the ballot.
Absolutely.
I need members now.
Bingo.
Okay, I would, I would suggest that I, I support Chief's idea of putting it in a mailer. But I think if we really want to get some boots in the ground on this, let's put it out with the tax bill. Because the zoning board adjustment, if you want businesses in town, you want things to change, that's one way to change the tax bill.
That's very true.
So send it out with the tax bill.
We can put that in, absolutely. David, please make sure that your article includes a desperate plea for help. Yes.
I like what Chief Randall mentioned about, you know, putting something in the newspaper. I think that Mr. Lemos has a great idea. And I hear Chairman Badger's, you know, need for members right now. I still think that, you know, while focusing on trying to find members now, I do think that putting it up for, you know, possibly putting as a warrant article, either by the boards doing or by petition, could long-term have a greater long-term impact in terms of filling the seats. I would caution, I would caution the residents, I would caution us all to, you know, and I mean this with respect, but I would caution us as to kind of writing elections off to just popularity contests. It is, we do have a democratic process, you know? It is a majority, a rural majority governance system. And, you know, I don't think that it's just popularity. I think that people as part of the community see something that they want to participate in. The voters, I believe, are intelligent and capable of discerning who they want to hold those offices. And if they elect somebody that they don't agree with, then the next time that office becomes available, that they have a voice to, you know, bring that to the ballot and vote differently.
Okay. Well, as I said, I, I have no objection to a warrant article, but I do believe it ought to be a petition. But that's, you know, we don't need to decide that tonight.
Right.
Again, priority number one is try to fill this board.
And that's a perfect segue to my next comment that I had.
Yes.
Two things, I'll be out of the office October 20th through the 25th, going to ICMA Annual Conference in San Antonio. And then, but I wanted to leave this for the board to consider, we have to start preparing the default budget and warrant. We have to post our last notice by January 9th, which is, you know, so basically we have two months.
Yep. I think that we should focus on the default and we think that the budget is as final as we can make it. There are some numbers that are coming in still, and as soon as we have those numbers that we're reasonably confident of, then we should sit down and go through the default.
Yeah, we got some numbers today that I sent to you guys.
Yeah.
Primex numbers for property and liability and the workers' compensation.
Okay.
Those numbers came in below that we are budgeted for.
Yeah.
I let the chairman of the Budget Committee know that while I'm out, that their next meeting, they should reduce those lines.
Okay.
So a little bit, yeah, a little bit of savings there from those two lines, but you know, we, just, those are just placeholders.
No, of course, and there were a few other placeholders. So we should set a meeting sometime early in November to work on the default.
I hope to have the Health Trust numbers for the insurance by the end of the month.
Yeah.
I believe they meet, their board meets, I believe, tomorrow.
Okay.
Sixteenth, usually when it's 16th or 17th, they have the six numbers.
Yeah.
Okay.
Other than that, my project list. As for the TAP grant, we interviewed three engineering firms. Selecton Civilingham gave me his final numbers. I've got the board's prior numbers, so I'll tally them up tomorrow and we'll announce who we selected.
Okay.
The Thompson Street Road Project, I'm going to attend the State Revolver Fund Workshop on November 20th, that's run by the state. I'll learn about our reporting requirements if this gets passed by the people, the dispersment process, if it again gets passed by the people. And we'll also talk about a warrant, writing the warrant article. They're supposed to touch on that a little bit.
Absolutely.
The GIS information system, we met with CAI Tech on September 25th, determined the next steps in the project. Okay, this one, we had discussed well actually before about using some of the unassigned fund balance to pay for this project. That is one option. Another option, which you guys could consider, I think, is writing a warrant article to create a capital reserve fund. That instead of having that really high number for the project, we could sort of cut it down and just ask the folks if they want to establish a capital reserve fund. And then over a period of three years, we build up those reserves and we purchase it in three years.
Okay.
You know, I got the warrant article written from another town that they mentioned at the meeting, a neighbor, that's how a neighbor in town did this project.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just want to express my support for that idea. I think it's, I think that's a good idea to make it a warrant article.
Yeah, when I talked it out about with CAI, he would give me, he said he'd give me one quote that's inflation-ingested, you know, so.
It might be more palatable to the voters than, than the whole thing, so, okay. Even though I, we're already behind the power curve, probably a couple of years isn't kind of a matter of.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
LW Packard Mill Site, Novus was scheduled to visit the site the week of October 9th to conduct groundwater monitoring. I don't know if they did or didn't, they didn't call me up to tell me if they did. I don't, can you expand on it?
I haven't heard any more. I think we're expecting a final report late this month, at the end of the month or early next month. So be anxious to hear what they have to say.
The Town Building Telecommunications, First Light is, First Light's working with CCS on the next steps. That project has kind of hung up a little bit. There's been some miscommunications between having one land and two lands. CCS thought we were supposed to have two, First Light said, no, it was one during the walkthroughs. The same people we talked for First Light wasn't there and we thought we were going to get two. CCS says we could probably work with one, basically would just share with the PD.
Mr. Smith, how will that be resolved? I mean, what's.
I'm waiting for CCS. I gave my information to CCS and they're going to go through it and respond to First Light. So, and CCS was willing to do that for us.
Have they given you the option, or if this is fiber optics, obviously you have a pair that comes into the building from one line. My family was in telecommunications for a little bit. You can prioritize that pair. You can prioritize it so that the PD has priority. If the PD picks up the phone on the town side, say there's an emergency in town, if the alarm, you can say the alarm, the town hall is going off, but the PD needs to make calls to say DHS or FEMA or whatever, they pick up the phone.
Right.
On the other end, the alarm goes and they get priority. You can do that, you should speak to them about that. That would necessitate only one line.
Yeah.
But it would put PD priority.
Yeah, and they said, CCS said the one line will work. They were just hoping to have them separate.
Okay.
So LRPC, DPW submitted the prioritization list. So we're just hoping to hear from them. Craig, I don't know if you, have you heard anything back from since then?
Can I just interrupt that brought to mind a certain thing that I just need to address? And that is, have you spoken with Craig, with Craig about being a member of the TAC Committee? Now that you're DPW director.
No, I haven't.
All right, so put that on the list, make sure that he gets in that loop and we can let them know that, that Craig is now our representative. Oh, I, I guess we need to announce that Craig is now officially the DPW Director. He has accepted our offer and we welcome you aboard, Craig, and look forward to working with you. Thanks, Clarence.
Okay.
No, 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 you're absolutely right. I thought it was common knowledge, but.
Yep. Ashland Electric Department building, Selecton Civilingham's going to speak to that in a moment. And actually, I'll throw it your way because I don't have any other updates.
Okay.
Can I butt in here?
Yeah, absolutely.
I could talk out of turn, but I guess I'm going to go on to new business because I guess I missed out on the department.
Okay.
And Pyrovich.
All right.
I've got a couple of announcements.
Yes.
One is that the drug takeback will be October, Saturday, October 28th, I believe it is.
Okay.
From 10 to 2 at the Ashland Police Department.
Okay.
You can come in and see yours truly there to drop off your unwanted prescription drugs.
Okay.
Just a reminder that Halloween will be on the 31st from 5 to 7. I know I mentioned that once before, but as we get closer, I just want a little reminder out there. And a reminder for everybody parking on the streets in Ashland, that from November 1st to May 1st, there are no parking on any street in Ashland from 1 a.m. to 5 a.m. Also, that refers to Mechanic Street Parking Lot, Town Hall Parking Lot, and the Memorial Park Parking Lot.
Okay.
I think normally the Memorial Park Parking Lot, we allow it to go until we get the first note because the town doesn't clean that up.
Okay.
And I think there's a sign down there that says something, or they, one that they put up that says like December 1st or something. So those are just a few items that I wanted to mention. The other thing, and I see Mrs. Schatz is not here tonight, and we were talking about the personal protection kits for the police department. And I did get a chance to sit down with Sergeant Hamilton, discuss that project with him, about what we need. There is actually a company that offers a kit that we can buy for basically $20 a kit that gives us the basic coverage that we need on it.
Okay.
Some of the items in the kit, when it needs to be replaced, we can buy at the local hardware store, so we don't have to go back through them because there'll be certain things that will get replenished and certain things that won't get replenished.
Yeah.
We also talked about how many of these kits that we really probably should have. And the kit does not come with a carry bag.
Okay.
Okay, so what I did is I went down to Ashland Lumber to check to find out what they had for good durable bags. And they had these nice Qdora bags that would work great to put these kits in, and they were $23 apiece. The next discussion we had was about how many do we need? We have eight people that have potential to come in contact with the stuff. So we're going to need at least eight kits. And as Sergeant Hamilton and I discussed it further, we really feel that there should be one kit in each vehicle as well as a personal kit that we keep track of all the time.
Yep.
Should somebody get called up to go to the scene to assist and they don't have their bag with them because it's at the PD and they go directly to the scene, there should be some protective device in that vehicle that they can just automatically use.
Absolutely.
Or should their stuff need to be replaced during the process of what they're dealing with, that they would have a backup in the cruiser?
Yeah.
And we feel that we really should have one in the booking room. Because if we have them at the booking room and we're doing a search and we find the stuff.
Yeah.
Somebody's going to have to glove up and mask up to, to deal with it. So basically what we came up with was that we need really 12 of these kits. To purchase the kits is $239.88. The bags, the carry bags that we use are, 12 of those would cost $276 for the 12 of them, for a total price of $515.88. I know Leah talked about, she had somebody that was willing to donate, and I don't know if it was donate money, supplies or what. So I will try to make contact with her because she seems to be spearheading this thing and felt like it's very important to us. And it is important to us.
Absolutely.
So I just want to let everybody else know what we've done to this point as far as information.
Fantastic.
I'll try to make contact with her when she comes into the PD or the town hall next door.
All right, wonderful, Tony, thank you. I think it's a small price to pay for safety.
Oh, it is, it's, and that's.
Yeah, yeah.
We do have the, a line where we did some drug forfeiture, we have some drug forfeiture money.
Yeah.
I think the line has $190 on it.
Okay.
We could use some of that money to offset that because it's supposed to be in that line of the drug stuff.
Okay. All right.
So you need about $326.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Something like that.
All right, and we'll wait and see what Lee has to say. So yeah, fantastic, we'll, we'll work something out. I think it's great.
I'll speak to her about it and figure out where we go from there.
Wonderful, thank you, Tony. Okay, I guess we're on for the Electric Department.
Oh, yes, okay. Well, I'll, I'll give you the executive summary first and then I'm happy to fill in the details. Essentially, after, between our last meeting and this current meeting, I have met with the commissioners on two occasions. One was the day after our last meeting and then one was last Tuesday, I believe. And that last Tuesday's meeting, they have notified, they notified me that our inability as a board to make a timely decision in support of their, of their proposed design has, means that they will now be working on it in the spring. They sound, you know, willing and interested to meet with us, to discuss options and discuss them. And, but they felt that they can't find a contractor that will be able to do it now before, you know, before winter sets in, basically. But they will get to it in the spring. And I asked them if they would still be financing it and they said that they would, they do plan on, you know, financing it as discussed. And, but it will just wait until spring, that's what they told me. And there's other details I can, you know, I can fill in the rest however you'd like. I don't know how much time you want to spend on it.
My concern was the salt loss this year.
Yep.
Have they stated any cost or mitigation that they'll be paying forward to reinstate our, our salt supplies? I went down and saw Department Director Moore explain to me the salt, how it's kind of changed its chemical structure and it's, it's no longer usable from the, from the water. My concern is that we will be back into that again.
And, and that is a concern because it was, what, like March or so when we, we had a lot of ice and that's when the runoff started happening and it was pouring down that wall. So I have no issue with having them wait till spring, but something needs to be in place to prevent that water from going over that wall again, so.
I'd be happy to address your question. So one is, I met with Mr. Moore the day before, you know, the day after our last meeting, before I met with the commissioners. And he walked me through it and he has done some, he's addressed basically some of the holes in that building. He's kind of sealed it up, so that should reduce the chance, the likelihood. But I will tell you that I don't, I mean, I think that, I think that there's a commissioner here, he might want to speak on it. My impression is, as liaison, sitting in their meeting, this is just my impression, is that they don't, they probably do not feel accountable for the salt at this point because, and, you know, and as a member of this board and hearing their discussion about it, I would be in support of that because I do feel that they gave a very good proposal. Um, I, and I think we had time to act, we had time to meet, or at least form a consensus. Um, but my impression is, but you know, again, I would request that they speak on that, my impression is that they probably. Don't feel that that's on them at this point.
I, I agree with their idea of the, um, non-permeable layer under the asphalt, and I understand that they are trying to move forward this, with this. Um, my concern for, for not just putting a rubber stamp on at the time was, um, when this came about. Um, in last spring, or no, um, September twenty-six, two thousand and sixteen, um, we had some heavy rains. And I was actually waist-deep in that hole where they proposed to put that swale, and I can tell you that that soil i- i- it's very pungent. And looking at the maps of the testing, my concern was, A, the soil that they excavate, where is it gonna end up? Because that's, that's the number one question, if that's the most tainted soil on the whole property, I would really like to know where it's gonna go before I rubber stamp it. And number two, I didn't have anything from Mr. Brown stating what type of non-permeable liner that they were going to use. Because again, um, a lot of the movement of contaminants involves rain runoff and impervious surface, um, moving those contaminants out of the soil. And I'm also aware that, you know, uh, we're less than three hundred feet to the Squam River there.
Mm-hmm.
You know, um, I understand that the non-permeable layer would actually keep the water moving. And the asphalt i- in some manner would act as a catch, it would catch some of the contaminants and actually sit upon the top layer of it, whereas the water would still move. My concern was the fact that where it runs between the new building and, and the coal shed. That that is the most contaminated soil on that property, and I just, I didn't want it coming back to bite this board. You know, we have members who were not members of the board at the time, um, myself and previous board member, um, Steve Felton, we're down there quite a bit.
Mm-hmm.
Previous member, Katie Marr, um, when this all went down, and I can tell you that that soil is black as that gentleman's bag right there. And that I would really like to have some kind of assurity as to where it's gonna end up before I rubber stamp it.
Absolutely, Harold, and I would also like to add that, you know, they're faulting us for not making a timely decision. I would like to point out that they had the entire spring and the summer, none of this was a new project, this wasn't something that was sprung on them. This has been known since the previous year, and they expected us to turn around a decision in a week. When we hadn't had the opportunity to review and, and make sure that Harold's concerns and, and everybody else's concerns were addressed. So I don't think that's a valid excuse, that's number one, number two is, what about the hay bales that were supposed to go up originally, remember? They agreed to put hay, hay bales.
Third Monday of November.
And that still hasn't been done, and maybe that's something that we can put up temporarily, but I refuse to admit that they're not liable anymore. Because we didn't act quickly enough, um, I think that's very unfair.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Um, I, so, in speaking with them and, you know, kind of being in the middle of, Mr. Smith and I, we worked. We worked pretty tirelessly for about, uh, you know, two or three days to try to.
Mm-hmm.
Reach some kind of agreement, I, I will say that my experience with them is that they were more than willing to work with us, negotiate with us. Every concern that I brought to them, I felt that they heard it and they were willing to work with it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and address it, relative to the soil, they did tell me, and I passed on to Mr. Smith to be dispersed to the board. That they would keep it on site, they would use it as filling on the, uh, it sounded like perhaps another portion of the building, though. I'm not, I don't know exactly, but they did assure me that it would remain on site as they had previously agreed. Um, and then the other thing is the, uh, you know, that impermeable, uh, surface that they were gonna put that, put under, the matting or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I discussed with them the concern about, you know, seepage, um. And they mentioned to me that there were two types of this cloth, for lack of a better word, I, I don't know what else to, you know, call it. But, um, and one was semi-permeable and one was completely impermeable, and they did tell me that they were willing to do the impermeable. Uh, solution, I passed that on to Mr. Smith, so I just want to say that I feel that, uh, from my dialogue with them. That whatever they may have, uh, lacked in your, you know, from your perspective in terms of, um. You know, communication along the way, which I don't believe was lacking, but whatever that may have been. I do feel that they made up for in their responsiveness and willingness to work with us in reaching a solution that would, you know, uh. Be acceptable to all of us.
And I do appreciate that, and I'm very well aware of their efforts and their willingness to spend the necessary money to get this taken care of. Again, my concern is that you shouldn't have had to be driving yourself crazy for two to three days, it should have been discussed. Months earlier, it is now October sixteenth, and now it's too late to do it, um, what happened to April, May, June, July, August? That's, that's my only issue, because these are, are concerns that you can't just put aside.
The, the one concern that I, that I noticed, um, when I reviewed this from Mr. Brown, Mr. Brown is a very reputable surveyor, um, and engineer. I'm sorry, engineer, um, was lower the grade eighteen inches, now I don't know if that's just where they intended to put the swale, but that was the whole property. Was, was kind of vague.
Mm-hmm.
Um, when, when Mr. Brown did this before, when he came on board to, to give them the original drainage plan, that the board select approved for the building to be built. Um, none of us were aware of the contamination of the soil.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know, you know, as far as would he agree upon this, had he known or not, you know, it, had the verbiage been, you know, now knowing, you know, this soil. The contaminant, it changed the plans, I mean, I don't know if that's why he had the plans, the way that they were. Um, definitely having something that keeps that water out of that contaminant i- is, it's required, that's what we need.
Mm-hmm.
But again, my concern was, it didn't say whether or not he was bringing down the whole grade eighteen inches, merely that side of the building. Or just the place where the, where the runoff swale was gonna be, so I mean, it kind of was vague, I mean, you're talking difference between three dump truck loads. Of soil to get rid of, for them to get rid of it, what is it, forty-one dollars a yard or something like that, or, you know, eleven dump trucks.
Right.
I mean, the original was thirty-three, so I'd say it wouldn't be that much.
Right.
But it's still a, a big variation, so I, I just wanted to have some clarity there.
And again, we had no opportunity to ask these questions and to discuss it, we were asked to make a decision, um, in absentia. Without having the ability to have an exchange, and, and I have all these questions answered, so.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Um, the last, I want to address, uh, your question, Mr. Lima, so I, you know, I think that Mr. Moore might be able to speak a little bit more. To the eighteen inches, I spoke with him, but I don't know exactly, uh, the, the ins and outs, but. Before, uh, Mr. Moore, uh, takes the floor, perhaps, if he wants to respond to that, I wanted to just say that I do think that. We, we had the opportunity to meet, um, I had made the recommendation to Mr. Smith, who, I know he passed that on to the, the chair. Probably the vice chair as well, that we meet, we had ample time to meet, I understand that it was not going to be. In the most optimal, um, situation, but I do think that it's really on us. Like, I feel like as a board, we need to just take responsibility for that, we didn't, we didn't get together and meet, and they were more than willing to answer our questions. And to send, you know, a delegate from their commission to speak with us and answer the questions, that was my feeling, so I think that that's on us.
I disagree, but that's okay.
I don't, I don't think giving people a week's notice is.
I, I don't think so either, I mean, you know.
I know, at least for me, I, I, if it's not at least a week, I can't get the time off.
Well, you can't get the time off, and you, you, you didn't have the privilege of the history that Harold and I had.
Right, so I would have more questions, yeah.
History, so, you know, again, I come back to the fact that we had an entire season, or two, to have lots of meetings. And to come in on a Monday and say we need a decision by Thursday was unrealistic, but anyway, it's a moot point, because they're not gonna do anything. I still would like to know if the hay, hay bales can be used, and perhaps you can s- speak to that with them. Because that was supposed to at least prevent the runoff, and I don't know if that would help with the possibility of water going over that wall into the salt shed. Again, you can fix all the holes you want, but we still shouldn't have water coming over that hole, and if they can put up hay bales, which they agreed to do a year ago. That might h- help over the winter.
When we agreed to ha- allow the building to be built, that was the board, one of the board's major con- contentions there was, you know, what do we do if water does end up there?
Exactly.
I believe it wa- I brought up the point, and also, um, Steve Felton, former chairperson, brought up the point that. Yes, there is eight feet between the foundations of the two buildings, when you add the overhangs, you're talking about four feet, four and a half feet. Between the roof line of one and the roof line of the other, so it, it's ideally like having a gutter that empties into your salt shed.
Mm-hmm.
That's why we agreed upon it was for the drainage, I mean, that was something that was required, and I understand, you know, timing and everything, and snow and frost. But, you know, yesterday it was seventy-four degrees.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it was last November that we told them to put up hay bales, and here we are, eleven months and two weeks later, and I've yet to see one bale of hay or anything put up there, so. I know that the world moves slow in politics and, and governance and all of that, but that just seems a little too slow.
Okay, we'll keep us informed, anxious enough about how they're gonna handle it over the winter, and, um, we in urge them. To set up a meeting with us early in the spring, so that we can discuss their plans and get some assurance that it's going to work.
I will, and if there are any other details, especially around like the hay bales, if there's some type of documentation that you want to share with me.
There was a motion, it's in the minutes, I believe, it's the third, third week of November two thousand and sixteen, I don't know the date right offhand, but it was the second meeting of that month.
Yep.
It was a motion, it was a five to zero vote.
Yep, thank you, Harold. Anything else on the electric department building? Any liaison reports?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Um, I just wanted to bring up the ATAC, now that we have, um, uh, you know, a new DPW Director.
Mm-hmm.
I just want to put that out before the board and ask you how you want to proceed with the, uh, Action Transportation Advisory Committee.
Um, we perhaps can put it in Craig's lap at this point, and, um, you can have some conversations with us. And, and figure out where we want to go from here, we'll have to reconstruct it, but, um, it is a good time to do this with you on board. And, and again, that's another reason for you to be going to the LRPC TAC meetings, you'll get a lot of wonderful information then. And if you have any questions, you can give Dave a call, because he's been going for a year or so, okay.
And as the liaison to the potential ATAC, um, what, what would the board like me to do to work with Mr. Moore to?
At, at this point, I'd be waiting, go ahead, Charlie.
Oh, no.
No, no.
That's what I was gonna say, I was gonna say, you might want to hold off on ATAC until we get back the reports from LRPC.
Absolutely.
Um, because.
It's gonna give us.
That data, me and Craig have also talked a little bit about some software.
Mm-hmm.
That is similar, that we're hoping may be able to use to counteract that, that gives you like a, 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 a complete road plan. Uh, you know, that grades all the roads and their conditions and what you can do. So then we, each year, we can figure out how much we can budget, uh, for each road and each section, and then when we can take all that data. Consolidate it, put in analysis, and then maybe bring that to, uh, ATAC that can sort of.
Yeah, bring it back to the board, and let's discuss where we want to go from there, I don't think we need to push it at this point till we have a, a, a direction.
Yeah.
Madam, Madam Chair. Uh, I just have a question for Selecton Barney, as the Water and Sewer, uh, Commission Liaison, I'm wondering, have you had an opportunity to go to any of the commission? Meetings, and my second question is, uh, have you been able to get from them a, uh, so, they, they gave us a year to date. Of their finances, but the warrant article that was passed specifically asked for quarterly reports. Um, and there's not a quarterly r- report, I showed what they gave to us, to our finance, um, person. And, uh, they said it does, does not meet the requirements of a quarterly report, so I'm wondering if you.
Excuse me, I was on, I was aware that Casey couldn't make the last meeting, so I did go, and I know that the last I heard, they were waiting for the September figures. So that they could complete the quarter, and that will be forthcoming.
Have we received the second quarter? Because they, uh, the Electric Commission has given us a second quarter, they're preparing their third quarter presently. So I would say that we should also receive a second quarter from the Water and Sewer.
Left.
We'll.
Yeah, it's one quarter left.
Take that to them tomorrow night.
Yep.
Okay.
To speak of the, the ATAC, one thing I, I remember, we discussed with the previous DPW Director. Is that there's a certain bridge on Hunter Street that we need to reevaluate before snow this year.
Yes.
And I don't know if anybody else on the board recalls that, but it was beginning to be undermined and the concrete was starting to pour away. We need to get a baseline on that bridge before we get snow.
Yep, I'm sure, Greg, you can take a look at that, give us some data.
Maybe, get a measurement.
We don't, we don't want any more bad surprises.
No more Calm Street, but just drive by little corners or any of that.
Okay.
All right.
Anything else? Are there any public comments? Okay, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to go into non-public, uh, according to ninety, RSA ninety-one A, colon, three, Roman numeral two. Um, uh, A, would that, would it just fall under A? Okay.
Um, what is, what is it, or what's this, what's?
Uh, we, we just.
Words?
The words of the dismissal, promotion, or compensation of any public employee, or the disciplining of such employee, or the investigation of any charges against him or her. Unless the employee affected has a right to the public meeting and requests that the meeting be open, in which case, the request shall be granted.
Okay, thank you.
Do I have a motion?
Let me exit motion.
Is there a second?
No, second.
All those in favor, uh, yeah, I'll say yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.